Haven't had to buy any fancy.
Hey, how are you? It's good.
How are you? At the big table? You complain?
Oh, come on, complain. Come on.
Who, me? No, I'm good. I'm just trying to get Dean's face.
They think I'm gonna beat 'em. They keep looking at me.
Yeah, my dogs don't listen to me. Yeah, I accept their food.
They're looking at me like, "Come on. The chicken's right over there." "I'll show you."
Wingin.
Yeah.
Mr. Gross, how are you?
Now we're meeting. You gotta be seated. Okay, ready, Wendy?
Ready when you are.
Okay, we're gonna do this both. Then I'll call the meeting order from the City Council side.
And I'll call the meeting order from the Traffic Commission.
We have a roll call, please.
City Council, we have Mayor Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrand.
Here.
Traffic Commission Chair Hill.
Here.
Vice Chair Pats.
Here.
Commissioner Coxhill. Absent. Commissioner Mejia.
Here.
Commissioner Rodman.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
And Commissioner West.
So Chair Hill, if I may. I'll go ahead and introduce the special order of the day, which is the City Council and Traffic Commission workshop. And I think, do we need a report or do you want to...
We can, between Les and I, will just give a very brief introduction. This item was brought forward at the request of the City Council to have a joint Traffic Commission and City Council meeting to discuss issues in common. And I am going to turn it over to Les to talk about, to drill down a little bit more and get the discussion started. So Les Johnson, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Brett. Mayor, council members, commission members. I know that this has been an item that I believe Council has been asking for a while to have regular meetings with, with the commissions. And so even though tonight, there's really one primary focus, I think this interest here is to be able to have dialogue between the commission and, and City Council. And hopefully this will happen maybe on a regular basis going forward. But tonight specifically, the matter that I believe brought this, this to be agendaized is having to do with the residential parking permit procedures and the review process and what transpired over the last, past two years, I believe. Back in late seventeen, the Traffic Commission began a process of sequentially going through each of the five existing residential parking programs that exist in the city. And again, those five are Old Town East, Old Town West, New Dutch, Carrier Row, and the Greenbrook Woodcrest neighborhoods. They went through a process of considering those individual programs. There was notice provided, hearings, and an opportunity for the commission to receive feedback. And as a result of that, back in February, on February nineteenth, staff provided a report to the council with regards to the recommendations that came forward from, from the commission. As a result of that, there was, the council essentially went with the recommendations of the commission with the exception to the New Dutch neighborhood. They had recommended that that neighborhood program conclude. And as I recall, council had instructed back to the commission for reconsider, to keep the New Dutch neighborhood program existing right now, to reconsider possibly expanding that neighborhood as well as the Carrier Row neighborhood boundaries. Both of those boundaries did not include the entire neighborhood itself. It's certain streets within those neighborhoods. And that information was coming back to the commission. And then that resulted, I guess, in the need to bring the parties together to talk more about, again, about what has transpired with that. So I'll, I'll conclude with that. Obviously, from a staff standpoint, we're happy to answer any questions you have, but I'll leave it to the council commission at this point.
All right. So to the council, any comments, questions that we want to start off with? And then I'll turn it over to Randy, so, on our end. And Chair Hill, I think it'll probably be more free form. And so maybe we'll do a couple rounds of comments, if you don't mind. But I know there's a lot of issues probably that you want to bring up on your end from the traffic. So I know, because you're here in front of council, some of you, and had asked for this meeting as well. So I'm gonna ask, any questions?
Sure, a comment, please.
Please.
Just a couple thoughts. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for what you do. I sat in those chairs years ago. Be careful, you could get stuck in this chair if anybody talks to you. But, you know, it's important work. I know you got overturned on the last one, and I think it caused some heartache. But, you know, it's, I want to show you how obvious it is that we haven't always had a good Traffic Commission here. Because here we are, a little city of 2.2 miles. We've got three Cherry Streets. We've got three Reagan Streets. We've got three Pine Streets, and two neighborhoods out of sixteen named Dutch. So not too much imagination in the past here. So we're glad you're here, and we'll work out whatever we need to here.
Thank you. Your part, Tim. Anybody else?
So I want to kind of echo some of those with what Richard said. I was also on the Traffic Commission. And I know you have been given a task to look at the, the parking permit process. And I am in favor of this regular review and see if we still need that, the sunsetting of that. And I know that there were decisions made that may come into question, so want to hear what the, you know, the feedback is and how we can work better together and make sure that we've, excuse me, we've charged you with a, a task and serving, of course, the community that we're all interested in and see where we can do better. So with that, Chair Hill, turn it over to you.
Well, so first of all, Mayor Kusamoto, you know, I tend to have a sense of humor. Is this an appropriate place for them or is this not appropriate?
It's appropriate.
Absolutely appropriate.
License is good.
So I want you to know that that's, that is who I am. Okay. So it's pretty broad at this moment. So I guess the first thing I would say is that I don't know of anybody that was put off by the concept of being rejected. I think when we propose something, we all understand that we're doing it at your request and at your service, and that you have the right to either agree or not agree with whatever we send forth. And we do so without our personal feelings involved, but based on the information we have in, based on the outreach we make to the community and the support we get from your staff. So to me, I don't understand why we, why at the City Council meeting where this was brought up, why it wasn't just rejected, as opposed to belittle, right? Publicly demean, right? I think those would be the things that we would say are maybe concerns. The actual mechanics of whether you adopt or not what we recommend, that's on you. And I don't think we really understand why you didn't just adopt or reject and move on.
Good question. So you want to go around the rest or you want to just seek discussion?
That's fine.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, and my fellow commissions. There were several items that came up that we thought needed to be addressed. First of them is the commission's recommendation to eliminate the New Dutch Haven parking permit program, which Chair Hill mentioned. The potential for the Carrier Row permit parking program to include more streets. And quite frankly, we didn't believe that we had the authority to do that. That's something that has to be changed and/or approved by the City Council. We can only make a recommendation, but we, we can't make those sorts of changes. The third item was New Dutch Haven and Carrier Row being treated as a whole versus two individual areas. I think that also came up. I watched the online video, and that's where I drew the ideas and the comments that I'm making at this time. And the fourth item was whether Marion Street and the Greenbrook track is part of the permit parking program or not. And again, that goes back to what I mentioned a few moments ago, that we don't believe that we have the authority to include or exclude a, an existing item within the parking program. Again, we can only make a recommendation, and it's up to the council to either approve, disapprove, make a new, I forget the name of what it's called. But the way the parking permit program is put into effect, is it a proclamation or a resolution? You have the ability to make the new resolution to make those kinds of changes. Thank you.
I have a 100% agreement with Randy's assessment. When I watched the video and the way that they were criticized in public, I think that maybe that should have been something that could have been done offline. And maybe before, for this year, to provide our recommendations. If you're not in agreement with them, then you can accept or deny them.
I agree with all the commission members. I think one of the things that was going wrong when, after we heard the City Council talking about it, I think something that made us a little bit apprehensive or, or think more about it was that comments from folks on the City Council who were, I believe, residents of those particular neighborhoods were heard. And I, I'm not sure that if the decision was based on those two comments by those folks who lived in the City Council, folks who lived in those neighborhoods, or based on the comments that we received from residents, from other residents, through the, through the neighbor process.
May I have one other thought? When, when we voted on the different areas, the people who lived in those impacted areas refused themselves. And I think that was a great problem.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all for the input. So back here to the council, looking for comments and maybe more questions if, however we want to proceed, okay? So.
Okay, so I'll start with that. I know the meeting you watched, and those comments came out of my mouth. And I know that. And I, I spoke without filter and with a lot of emotion. I had no intention of belittling or demeaning anybody. And if it was taken that way, I apologize. I also watched the meeting, and that's exactly how I would have taken it as well. And I never, ever want to come across that way. That came out of a weekend of frustration of being hit by a lot of residents who probably didn't participate in the process, but all of a sudden showed up at my front door with phone calls and personal visits and everything else. When I started digging in through it, that is my neighborhood. I live in Carrier Row. I live a street over from Lexington. I remember when the permit program started back in, I think, 2004. It was introduced. We all got our stickers. We all got our visitor placards, and then it was never enforced. At the time, I didn't under, I assumed, bad thing to do, that all of Carrier Row was part of the permit program. So when I dug into it a little bit more and realized that Lexington wasn't part of the permit program, or Howard, which is the two most impacted areas on the base level, on the, on the west part of Carrier Row, and those are the neighbors that were contacting me about not being able to park in front of their houses on the weekends because they, they've upped the, the drill weekends to every other weekend now. So, and a lot of the, the base has addressed their parking issue. They have plenty of parking. The reservists choose not to want to get in line on Lexington to get onto the base. It's much easier for them to park on Howard, on Lexington, on some of the other streets. And it impacts weekend parking for neighbors if they want to have parties or birthday parties or however. And then when I saw that New Dutch was going to be excluded, and with the construction that's going on across the street, and I've been told by a number of people that they are encouraging either employees of the new construction over there for the assisted living facility, or visitors for the housing project over there, that there is not enough parking, so they are encouraging those employees and those visitors to park across the street in our neighborhood. And I've gotten emails from people saying, "Please do away with your permit program so we can park there when we go visit our friends and our parents in Cypress." It's a very, that group over there is very vocal. I wouldn't say active, but they're vocal. And my, my comments were pure out of emotion, and I apologize. I probably should have done it better. I, I wasn't sure the avenue to communicate the frustration. Probably should have contacted Randy. In fact, not probably, I should have contacted Randy and said, "Hey, here's what's going on. How do you want me to address this at council? How can we bring this to the Traffic Commission to make a consistent plan of either do the permit program or not do the permit program, but not do one street and not do another street? Because those two neighborhoods are one continuous neighborhood. There's no border that says, "Welcome to New Dutch." Howard runs through both neighborhoods, so the first part of Howard, that's Carrier Row, so is that permit and then New Dutch is not? How does it split up? How do we communicate to the people? The people that have lived there for the past 20 years have known about this permit program and all the signs up, and it's never been enforced. The other thing that happened is the day after your meeting, or two days after your meeting, everybody started getting warning citations on their windshields for all their cars parked on the street. My husband got one. Well, the sticker that we got in 2004 is probably five cars ago. So we didn't have a sticker, and it wasn't a ticket, but it was a warning citation that you had to contact the police department to fix it. So I was concerned that now all these neighbors are getting these warning citations, and they have no way of knowing to fix it. They're not aware of the program. And all of a sudden, we're starting to enforce a program that hasn't been enforced for 15 years. So there was just a lot going on. And like I say, I can't apologize enough for how I came off, my snarkiness, my unfiltered emotion. It shouldn't have been done from the dais. What I, what I would like to do is, you know, we do need to do a better job of being able to have a conduit to be able to communicate between the Traffic Commission and the council the same way that the Planning Commission communicates with us. One of the things, you know, we're encouraged not to necessarily show up at commission meetings, so you guys can do your work. So he, we hear about the decisions after the fact. With Traffic Commission, because it's not televised, we don't get to see it. We get to see a condensed version of the minutes a few weeks later. Some of the dishes have already been implemented. You know, I'd like to recommend that we start recording. The Traffic Commission's, I found out today that it's $165 a session to record it. I think that's money well spent. And we are now, as a city, starting to rely more on video minutes than the actual written minutes. And I think traffic is a very hot topic in Los Alamos, probably more so than planning. And with all the construction going on in our city and around our city, I think that the more transparent that the Traffic Commission is, the better. People tend to get more upset about traffic than they do about planning. And so I would like to see that. And just open to any kind of suggestions. I know with staff, the day after the Planning Commission, they send us a memo about decisions that were made, and we have that the next day. I'd like to recommend to do the same thing with traffic, so we're immediately known of what decisions were made. And if anything's a red flag, then we can bring it up with staff and ask for the logic or the clarification and things like that. So just some, some baby steps, including huge behavior modification on my part, and maybe less snarkiness and more communication from my part, too.
Well, you can do a snarky show on me, but I prefer you not to do it on purpose.
Right. And, and that's where I didn't divide the line.
If I, if I may add something. We actually just received brand-new information from you tonight. The fact you have received this many concerned citizens' calls and information about wanting to park in that area, we had no idea. Had we had that information, perhaps the decision would have been different.
And, and that's where I think, and, and that came after the decision. That came after your, your, your meeting. It was, I believe it was communicated to staff, so now how does that get back to the Traffic Commission? I, I think we just need a better conduit of being able to communicate with each other without any, I don't know, violations and all the regulations that you have to go through anyway. But there has to be, traffic is such a hot topic in the city. We've got to have a better way of making sure we're all on the same page, making sure that any recommendations are, are consistent with kind of the overall master plan of the city. And so we don't come back and say, "Traffic Commission, you, you really missed the boat on that one, because that, that appeared, that, that looked bad." Anyway, that's, I'll go further.
The Traffic Commission, they didn't just show up and make a decision of, "No, we're not going to grant parking to this." They sent out flyers. They sent out survey monkeys. They've asked people to reach out to the community. So I would like your recommendations on what you feel we should do to better enhance what we're already doing. Because we felt that we were doing the things that were necessary to outreach to the community. So the community has some responsibility in responding before decisions are made, in my opinion. So I'd like to get your recommendations.
So thanks, Tony. So, you know, in the nine years I've served, I know that we've had several surveys that were very, very important, and it's really hard to get responses. It just really is. So I appreciate all that the commission has done to outreach and, and get those. I know that I would look to Les and even his predecessor, they, they would go out with mailings and door, door hangers and, and everything they can. So it's kind of, it's kind of tough to do when people are content with, or, you know, somewhat content with their lives. And, you know, you give them something they're going to be fired up about, then they're out there in droves. So I, just, you gotta do what you're doing, and we just kind of trust, we have to trust, you know, your assessment of, of the information that you take in. And I think, I guess, unless counsel's other question, I wanted to say, you know, I, I will take it as my responsibility for having my, you know, moderating that meeting up there, that I should have controlled it better. And I think that, you know, the courage you all had to speak in front of us and air the grievance, I think this is a great opportunity, as, as Les said, that, you know, we, we've asked for these joint meetings. And some of it is, you know, we'd like to have this, but we really should just make it a regular thing. But we're all busy, and it's tough, tough to line up all these schedules. But this is, I think, just, you know, in all of the difficulty that you all, you know, have gone through, I think this is that opportunity to recalibrate, to, to look forward to how we do things better and how we keep those lines of communication open. In, in my tenure of, of having served two terms and this partial year, we've never had a joint meeting between the council and the commission, the Traffic Commission. We've done it with the Planning Commission, I think, just maybe twice? And so as Les said, this is something we ought to do, and we ought to just put on calendar and have that, again, that, that calibration. And Randy, you know, humor is always appreciated, right? Something like this, you know, because we're not adversaries. We're not, we're not across the table from that. We're actually, you know, you are, yeah, serving at our pleasure, but you are our eyes and ears. And we, we need to, you know, when we sit up there, we're getting all kinds of barbs and, you know, spears directed at us. So sometimes we get a little snarky, so. And it was never meant to be against you all, right? So we're just trying to, like, like you're just trying to do the best we can with, with our experiences. But Tony, you just have to kind of keep doing what you're doing and, you know, make your decisions based on your best assessment, as, when we ask you that, when you want to serve, right? Go with unbiased opinion, you know, look for the best of our community. That's all we can ask of you. That's all we're trying to do here, from the, from the dais as well, from the elected office. I'll open up to my colleagues. By me.
You know, I think, Randy, you and Vice Chair Pats hit the nail on the head. And you don't have the value of an attorney at your meetings where planning and the council does. But you're right, you can't just arbitrarily decide you're going to put parking on Marion, permits on Marion, or put permits in other streets. There's a process, and you guys work that process out, and it requires those people to come forward and submit petitions, and then it's aired and viewed. So you didn't do anything wrong. I think in, in my case, and, and I can pretty much guess, but in my case, I'm in Old Town West, and I'm in a permit area, and I never got a letter, a hang tag, or anything else, because I would have responded to it. But I'm on the very south end of it, and it really affects only one day, which is Sunday. Now, across the street is permit. Those permits were put into place because of Cottonwood. Cottonwood's gone. Is it still the same issue in the community? And I would have to assume the questionnaires you, you put out got that feedback that said, "Yes, let's just leave it alone." And we've got new developments going in on the very northern end of Old Town West with the 50 condos and soon the 108 apartments. The good thing is the apartments, the stipulations that were put in on that, they cannot park on the street, and they're not going to get parking permits. But there's more parking on-site for those apartments than's required. And so it shouldn't be an issue with them. It could be with the, with the condos. We'll only know that when, when they get built and sold and people moved into them. But I personally appreciate the work that you guys do, and I think your views in terms of, of what you could and couldn't do were right on. I agree with the mayor. We tend to get more people that want to come and yak because they're on TV, so maybe you don't want to be on TV. And...
Not me.
Well, we can take a vote right now, so. But, you know, I think you guys are doing a good job. I, I agree, we need to have better lines of communication, because I can remember also having served on the Planning Commission, wondering what the council's thoughts are, why they acted the way they did. So good dialogue like this is healthy and, and appreciated from my perspective, and I'm sure really from the rest of them. So you're, you're spot on on what you're doing.
I, I just have a couple of quick comments. One of the things that made this process difficult, and I have lived in this city for 25 years, is that when we looked at this, this item, and the response we got, and knowing that it had relatively gone unnoticed.
Noticed.
Noticed for years, right? And so that starts to lend to an issue, because if, you know, you, the responses, we got a lot of responses that said, "We'd like signs, but we don't want any enforcement." You know, that, you know, and so in speaking with, with Les or with the, the police, you know what I mean, and them wanting to enforce this item, and, and if... and if that's the direction we're going to go, knowing that...